Recording.
All right, well, welcome everyone to the Hopkinton School Board meeting for Thursday, November 19th. It's 5:30. We have a full board with us here today. Seth Aframe, Norm Gupel, Rob NATO, Andrea Folsom, myself, Jim O'Brien, and we're joined with Mia Richter, our student rep, and then Superintendent Steve Chamberlain and Michelle Clark, our business administrator. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you see the flag? I want to make sure.
We sure do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Stephen. So that is Harold Martin School going up.
Yep, every two weeks, well, soon it'll be every week. We'll give, but that was today. That's the progress through this morning. Behind the flag and they're, they're getting there.
Nicely done. So we are meeting once again remotely since we've been meeting since March. And we're able to meet remotely because of the governor's emergency declaration and his emergency orders relating to COVID-19 and the global pandemic. The emergency orders relate, some of the emergency orders relate to public boards like the Hopkinton School Board. And waves are, and waves the requirement under 91A that boards have a physical location. And so we are operating tonight fully remote. There's no physical location for the meeting. But members of the public can view our meeting here this evening over Zoom and they're also able to call into our meetings. In order to listen, we have two public comment periods scheduled in our agenda in which members of the public are able to to raise their hand, let us know that they have public comment to give and are able to give it. All the other requirements of RSA 91A or New Hampshire's open meeting guidelines are being followed by the board. So we'll have minutes available following this meeting. And then we also are recording these meetings and the recordings available up on our website. And the only other, I always forget this part, but the only other difference that, that audience members will see is that all of our votes, when we do these remote meetings are roll call votes. So it takes a little bit longer to go through, but each of our votes will be roll call votes. So Steve, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, I'm under the update to the matrix. I can talk about just walk through MSS, the closing for tomorrow. But so I think we can just slide it in there besides, I think we're okay.
All right. And I would just mention for the board's planning, I will ask to go into a non-public session following our meeting, just so we can be prepared to do that. Steve, any correspondence this evening?
There were a few correspondence in the correspondence folder in the packet.
And we all have access to that. And then I would just also in the packet were minutes from our last meeting. And so I just asked if there is a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of our regular school board meeting, which was held on November 5th, 2020. Guys are quiet tonight. Any discussion edits, suggestions? All right, hearing none. Seth?
Seth Aframe, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So those minutes were approved and I just want to welcome our second student rep, Juliet Shahadi. Juliet, thank you so much for joining us this evening. All right. So this brings us to our first public comment portion. Let me try that again. This brings us to our first public comment portion of the meeting. And so if you're attending the meeting and you wish to provide a public comment, please just scroll down with your mouse to the bottom of the screen where there's a raise your hand button. If you click that, that lets us know that you have a public comment. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. And as I said, there's a second public comment opportunity towards the end of the meeting. So I'm seeing no hands raised. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is presentations and staff reports. And I think Steve's going to walk us through a student safety presentation.
Comments from the board?
Oh, I'm sorry, everybody. I'm comments from the board. I skip these things all the time. From the board. Any board member have comments they wish to give tonight?
Real quick.
No, Norm Hugo, go first.
No, no, mine's real quick. No, I just wanted to say congratulations to the girls varsity team into Mike's on on their championship on a, on a good season. It's great to see, you know, Mike's won three in a row. You know, we know they go to the big leagues, but no, congratulations to the girls and all our, all the teams this year that went deep into the playoffs.
Jim, mine is quick as well, relates to the upcoming teachers contract negotiations and my role or non-role in that. Just so everybody is clear. Because my wife works in the school district, I would be recusing myself from the vote, but I would also not be participating in any discussions that would happen at the board level, either publicly or in non-public session. So I'm stepping aside from all of that for really obvious reasons.
Thanks, Rob. Any other public comments from the board? Seth?
Sure. I'll say one thing, which is I had the pleasure, maybe two weeks ago of doing a training for civics teachers with Kate Centros. And she and I have done some collaborative things and so we were talking about that. And she talked about some of the things that she did, does. And it just got me thinking about civics education in general. And I think we can all agree, no matter what side we're on, that our, our politics are, are challenging. And it just brought home to me the importance of civics education and something that got me thinking about in our school system. Is are we dealing with that too late in the game? I mean, as I, as I see it now, we teach it in 12th grade. And by 12th grade, we have already, we are way down the road. And I did some civics training, some civics outreach with the seventh grade class recently in Rye. And it was very rewarding and I was sort of impressed at what they, what they can do at a younger age with that material. And I was just sort of thinking that as I've seen my kids go through this, our school system, I don't feel like we do enough of that early enough. And I just went that out there to Mr. Chamberlain is something to think about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
He's Seth. Andrea? Nothing this evening?
I don't really have anything. No, I'm ready for this awesome meeting.
How about our student reps, Mia or Juliet? Do you have any comments? All right, um, my, I'd be very brief. My comments is, you know, as we head into what is my favorite holiday, which is Thanksgiving. I just, you know, we say this often, but I don't think we can say it enough. I just want to extend my thanks. First to my, my fellow board members who have, have spent a year that's been probably much different than the year that we thought we would spend as board members here in Hopkinton. And so I just want to thank you all for, for really digging in over the, since March, but since the pandemic. And not only taking your job seriously as a board member, but, but I, I think doing more work than I think I've seen any board do ever. I mean, it's been pretty incredible. So thank you all. Thank the leadership team, you know, Stephen, Michelle, but, but also our building principles for managing what has been just, just been a really crazy year. And then, you know, to our teachers and the ministers, teachers and staff who are on the front lines, teaching our kids, you know, thank you. And to all the parents and community members who, who are doing their best to keep their heads above water. And of all the pressure of, of, of school, family, safety. Just want to, just want to say thank you to everybody. We're all in this together. And I think while we haven't always agreed on anything and we've had some pretty, pretty long meetings and some interesting discussions, I, I do think we're, my optimistic side says that we're better for it. I think we're, we're a stronger community for it and we're learning as we go. So thank you all for, for pitching in and helping us out. So with that, I will then now move to the agenda item. I promise I'll try to keep myself on better track looking at the agenda. So we are under presentations and staff reports. We do have the student safety presentation. And Steve is going to lead us to that. So Steve, thank you.
Well, my pleasure. Thank you. I'm going to bump up April DeRocher. She is our SAP, our Student Assistance Program Coordinator. I knew this year. And so I'm going to go through the presentation and if there's questions and comments, April can speak to those. I'm going to share my screen and hopefully does everybody see student safety presentation?
We do. Thank you, Steve.
Great.
And thanks for joining us, April.
So just a little, this is part of the work that we do in assessment. Remember I've reported out on post-high school plans. I've reported out on special education, student success, state testing, SATs, AP. But we also report out and monitor this area of our student life, which student safety, which is the youth risk behavior survey. So just a little bit about the youth risk behavior survey. So we've been doing it, when I was principal, we did it as sample. And back then, that's they asked for just volunteers for a sample of our students. But since 2011, we've been doing it because the state got a grant and it was free for us. We've been going school wide since 2011, which means every student in our high school, this is high school, takes a YRBS. There's always questions about the validity of the data in a YRBS. Do they exaggerate? Do they under-report? There are some reliability safeguards built in by the CDC. So this was, this is a CDC countrywide. You know, we're talking about New Hampshire and HOP, but it's given throughout the country. And so if you answer a question 13 one way and question 15 down there slightly different, they will throw out the answer. So there is some reliability questions. And a few years ago, the state passed a law about non-educational surveys that you have to opt in. And trying to get people to opt into a survey is very difficult. You know, that's an extra step, but they grandfathered in the YRBS. So why the youth risk behavior survey is still an opt-out. So we get a pretty good participation. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do. So this document is reviewed by our Student Assistance Program Coordinator, Leadership, Family Support and Wellness. And we just found out notice it's every two years and the 2021 is usually in the spring. It's going to now be in the fall of 2021 because of the pandemic. They really want people to take it in school. Because they don't, not sure if you took it with your parents right near you, whether or not you'd have great data. So they postponed and hopefully by then everybody will be in school. So just a little bit about the journey about substance use and concerns and issues arising in Hopkinton. Since my, you know, obviously the, the coming to the end of my 22 years to get some time for reflection. So my first year as assistant principal, and Rob will remember it was an event that really shook our school. We had adults purchase kegs for a postseason party from end of our season. And Chief Wheeler back then was our police chief and it, and it got, it was apprehended. The kids were, the kids were caught. But it was an adult purchased keg. And we had a, a, a hearing for violations of the Kochik agreement with 50 people in the auditorium and press. And it was very difficult. That was the first, I think, significant involvement in my work. We work with New Futures. We work with the PTA. We looked at program. We worked, we went and visited other schools. And so we delved into that and we learned a lot from that situation. And then, you know, I was assistant principal for four years. We had a board retreat and I was Sandra, the former principal said, Steve, you should go to the board retreat because you're going to be the principal next year. And it was about a week right, it was in the, in June, it was a week right after the prom. My last prom as assistant principal was at Center of New Hampshire. And we had five students inebriated drunk at the prom, worked with Manchester Police. It was an awful, awful experience. And when I reported out to the board, they said, my biggest concern coming in was about substance use. And that's when we advocated my very first budget as principal, we advocated for a full, a stronger SAP program. We have in our time developed a, we significant revisions for our substance use policy or drug alcohol policy. And we try and engage the community in a discussion like this. It's, it's, I try, as most people know, one of my pet peeves is blame. I try not to work on blame at all. I always try to work on getting better in this. And I'm not trying to abdicate responsibility or, but this is a school issue. It's a parent issue. It's a community issue. This is an issue for all of us to work on together. And so we have tried to engage the community quite a bit. So a little bit about work groups, and I think it's a little small, but so just what, what we do with this data. So just in the district we've looked at and we spent more time on trauma-informed practices. We have looked at our health curriculum. We have established the SAP. And if you remember, I think it was last year before I spent some time trying to get 21 tobacco age. And the governor did pass the law this summer. So now in New Hampshire, you have to be 21 to buy tobacco products. But I was working with the select board, if you remember, going to the town meeting before that. Hopkinton Cares is a group that does gut lunch and there is questions about food insecurity in the YRBS. So we work with Hopkinton Cares to reduce food insecurity. Wellness, remember wellness brought forward a couple of years ago, a policy about having a movement break. That was related. Seat belts, there's a question about seat belts. It's a passion of mine. Last year, the student athletic leadership, activity leadership team did a seatbelt audit, if you remember, and I reported that out to the board. Two years ago, we did a texting while driving campaign. That's also a passion of mine. And we've also taken on any energy drinks in school. We look at that data. We also have a inter-agency team in Hopkinton called the Hopkinton Family Support Team. That has ecumenical, we have a church, we have the police chief, we have Department of Children Youth Services, we have Riverbend. We have a Marilyn Briesaw as in social services. We have some advocates. And we meet monthly in that mission and we get in and we take the data from YRBS and look at program. But we try to support families, but we also try to provide educational programs. We give monthly resilience awards to kids in all three schools. Dr. Andrew, remember the state forensics doctor who lived in Hopkinton reported, came into two events for us. One was on the opioid addiction problem. Lynn Lyons came and spoke about anxiety that was sponsored by the family support team. We did Screenagers, a joint project with the Beach Hill School from Family Support Team. We did a Who Cares About Kelsey screening with Dana Beeb. We read endurance about Shackleton through the lens of, of the growth mindset. And two years ago, and this is where sometimes I bring my life, like Law and Order, my life into this. When my son graduated high school, he went to a couple of graduation parties where there were some adult sponsored kegs and things like that. And that was of concern. So we did some program with Mrs. Luna, Henrietta Luna, Judge Luna, Chief Pacora, Kim Haley. And we talked about what happens when adults actually condone and purchase kegs and beer for underage and the implications on that. So all that's been done and it's all connected to YRBS work. Everybody okay? Questions about, so we look at this document and it's a, it's a real document for us. So I'm going to go through some, I've reported out some similar slides and, but the YRBS is in the, is in the support materials folder and I will put it up. I've got some websites to work on the new website. I'll put it up in reports. But one of the things we track is who's used alcohol in the last 30 days. The purple line is school. And then you've got region. So as we're looking at trends, it was, you know, we're making a little bit progress. It's going down a little bit to where it was in 2011. So this is those who've used alcohol in the last 30 days. Who's used marijuana in the last 30 days? And we've, we actually had a book read in the community about marijuana use. And it's not, if you look from 2015 to 2019 increasing, and that's obviously aligned with legalization, medical use marijuana. So the mixed messages with kids about marijuana. So that's increasing from where it was in 2015.
And you, you probably said it and I just missed it. Is this, is this just high school students?
Just high school.
Okay, that's, thank you.
And there is a middle school version of it. We've never done it because New Hampshire has never done it as a whole. But some states have adopted, have utilized the middle school version. New Hampshire never has. And the hard data and more data is in the full report. These are just some things we track over time. Vaping is, as you can see, we started asking questions about two, really 2015 and 2017. And obviously a big increase from 2017 to 19, currently use vaping and ever-used. Those are on the alarm. Those are things vaping is something that we have adjusted our curriculum at our high school health curriculum to include lessons about vaping. Here's an alarming one because everybody thinks, oh, would, would kids use heroin? And so we put this, so for a couple of years, we didn't have enough to register, but it just came back on register through the survey. So there has been some, but in 2011, it was significant. We had a gap and then it just came back on. So we do have, it's not a lot, but of course, anything is of concern. This is one of the things that we've tried to been working on. And if kids think things are unsafe, it impacts their behavior. If they think it's not unsafe, they're more apt to use it. So we actually would like to see this going up. So less kids thinks it's great risk by binge drinking. We would prefer them to think it is risky to their health. So they would make a choice. And that's one of the things we're trying, the family support team took on. This piece, the risky behavior and also talking with parents. That there was an alarming number of kids who said they've never talked to their parents about substance use or these risky behaviors. And kids, believe it or not, they do listen to parents and they, you know, if you do continue the message. My kids hate it when the YRBS comes out because I know that means I'm going to talk with them. Because it's very alarming as a dad and when you're in this business. Considered suicide in the last 12 months. And again, there's more to unpack, pretty stable. If you remember a few years ago, there was Exeter High School had a number of students attempt and had suicide. And that's what changed the law. And so we have mandatory suicide training. I think it's four hours that we have to do every year now and it, we have to do it by the end of the June. And so the YRBS drove legis, YRBS plus school experience drove legislation and changed our training as schools. So this is, so, and so this is one we would like to be low. So seat belts and there was a pro, we offered a program in Hopkinton years ago called, it was, it was a driving program sponsored by the Lovering Foundation. And I did some seatbelt awareness work. Rob, you might remember we had the convincer come and we had the glasses come. Do you remember those assemblies where you actually sit in a car and it go down a little ramp and it, it, you know, makes you think about an accident? So this one is, is a struggle for me because it's so preventable, right? With that, the, the seat belts. And one of the things that I've been disappointed in, in some of our legislators and our governor is about not having a seatbelt law. I think we're the only state in the country without a seatbelt law. And data does show that if you're an 18-year-old and you don't wear a seatbelt, the 16-year-olds in the car, they'd sometimes take it off. But we really want this to be zero. And, and we're doing okay in HOP and, and our, our seatbelt audit last year was pretty successful. But I look at this one every year because it's so important. And texting or email while driving, it's pretty flat, but we're talking 40% have texted or emailed while driving. It's a real struggle for me. That's why we did a campaign a couple of years ago with SALT. We talk about it a lot. Because if you think about it, our youngest, most inexperienced drivers are becoming the most distracted. Not like we shouldn't do it either, but you know, when you're just talking about someone who's just got their license. So this is one that we talk, I want to talk to kids about. This is a good one. Physically active. We're a very physically active school. We got 60% of our kids were physically active. That's really good. Significantly above the region in New Hampshire. And so we wanted to put some good news in about how active kids are in HOP. So we also track substance use violations. And this is since 2007. I was principal back here. And it's gone up and down. A couple of things that we've done and you'll see it in a minute. We, when we did some work on the substance use policy and the first line, we talked to treatable health conditions, which I really appreciate the board taking a look at it as a treatable, a social issue or mental health issue or a health issue as opposed to a punitive issue. I don't know if Rob might remember or not, but I did a listening post about fundamentally changing how we handle substance use in our schools. And the community was not ready to not have consequences removal from school. And I get that. And, and we, and, and so we still, we suspend students for violation. But what we've added, we've added recovery-based principles in which kids return on probation. And they have to do educational activities to get off probation in our school. It's been pretty success. We actually started that because of 2018. So we did it 2018, 19 and 20 where we started. And also in 2018 was when I started looking at recovery of 89. So part of the recovery principles, for example, if a student came to me and it was substance use, they have to meet with their SAP. So that's part of the re-entry where they would have three to five meetings with our Student Assistance Program Coordinator. And for one youngster, I asked, I usually give kids a choice, like seven different activities. They could read a book like Chicken Soup for the Teenage Soul. They could interview some people like Chief Pacora. And one of the choices was to attend a recovery group, Al-Anon, Alateen, Narcanon, those. And I, we, when, when working with, it was Kim Haley back then about finding a group, there really wasn't a group similar of kids, you know, high school kids in HOP. There was a group at New Hampshire Tech of older kids and there was a group in Manchester with just a little bit different experience. So I started trying to think about and trying to create a group of, you know, Concord, Bo, Kirsage, up 89. It's something that you'll see, I never got off the ground, but it's something that was always been there about trying to create a recovery group. If you ever, there's a, one of the most powerful movies, films I ever saw was called The Anonymous People. And it's about 24 million people who suffer from substance use who, who aren't, who are pretty anonymous. And it's well worth watching and they talked about recovery high school. So many states have recovery high schools. They have high schools for kids in recovery. Because one of the, once you have a substance use and you go back to the same context, it's very difficult to change that behavior. And I think I told April the story. I don't know if you remember, for a cup of coffee, we were going to close Maple Street School because of declining enrollment. And we were looking for alternative purposes. And for a few days I had creating a recovery high school at Maple Street School, working with a charter. But enrollment went up and of course, morally, you know, the story is we still have Maple Street School. So we do track this and we look at the substance use over time. We have made progress. As I said, this is our first line of our policy. We added recovery principles. We do training. We have a, a peak performance group who takes a look at this. And, and to really to the board's credit, we've had extraordinarily, extraordinary pressure on the budget the last few years. And the board has continually said that our school, we need this to support our kids from this data. And there's, you know, this is a opportune time because right after Thanksgiving, we go into budget and you will see continued pressure on the budget. But when you see the kind of data that I just showed you, look at the whole report. Having a Student Assistance Program Coordinator and we contract with Second Start. And so we get regional information as well. When I first got here, and I'm sure Rob remembers, we had one day a week, it was Jen Sawtech Gagnon. She was a four-day-a-week Maple Street School guidance counselor and she came to us one day a week. And so we've expanded that April's, I think is what, three days a week, April? Does that sound right? Three. So I look back, this was, this was the same slide that I had two years ago. What have we done? What haven't we done? I don't think we surveyed parents to find out the why it's so difficult to talk with kids. That was on our list. I'd like to know why. Because just talking with kids continually about these issues, whether it's seat belts, whether it's textings, whether it's alcohol is just really important. We also, as I said, we didn't, I wasn't able to establish 89 recovery, a, a support group for kids in our region who have substance use issues because it is an evidence, evidence-based practice. And I really would like to do that. We have looked at curriculum. We have done some, a lot of safe messaging work. If we used, we bought little placards for every table and we, we, we trade out stats and data. And we have provided a lot of community events. We have, hopefully we'll continue and hopefully we will be able to talk with children. There is more, if you're interested, there's a lot more to the YRBS than this. It talks about safe sex practices, date, date violence practices, bullying practices. These are the ones that we've tracked over time, but we do look at this wellness, family support team, Hopkinton Cares, leadership team. We do dig into this data pretty well. I don't know. Hopefully that at least gave you a sense of the work and the time and the data. I don't know if I went to, it's tough to read you if I went. I don't know if I went too, I, I tough to read you if I went too fast, went too slow. It's tough to read.
Well, luckily we can ask questions. So.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Steve or April?
I don't have any questions, but I would encourage folks to, the YRBS is a really long document, but it's got a lot of really good information. I have had the opportunity to sit in the wellness committee this year and it was brought up in one of our earlier meetings. And so I, I got to take some time to look through it and it's, I mean, it's really, this gives a great overview, but the depth and breadth of it is, is remarkable. So I'd really encourage not just board members, but community members to take a look once it's up. Because I think it gives a really interesting insight into our, our teens. I'm also interested in seeing what's going to happen next year because it seems like a lot of the questions that we're going to be asking, it's going to be reflective on COVID times. And so I'm really interested to see how things are going to be different as we've gone through a pandemic.
Andrea, thank you. The engaging the community, we've, we've tried to be as transparent as possible about the YRBS. We don't run and hide from the data. It's all not pretty, by the way. Some of it makes me uncomfortable, but we want to work on it. When I was principal, we did some nights, we had a night in the Hopington, I mean, the, the library and we'd get two people to come. And then two years ago, I, I put myself in the library at the high school during open house. When we used to have the open house that you came in and, and study halls on their schedule was go see the superintendent to talk about YRBS. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't an engaging piece. So we tried to find ways, but if in the privacy of their own home to take a look at it and talk with their kids would be great because there's a lot there. So thank you.
I just wanted to say, thank you. Thank you, Steve, and thank you board for finding a way, excuse me, to keep this program alive with the SAP. This has been my life's ambition to work with kids around prevention. If you know my background, I've worked as an SAP. I've worked as a safe schools coordinator in Manchester. I was the Department of Education's Program Director for Safe and Drug Free Schools. This is really important work and I commend you all for doing that. And the YRBS is a great pulse on what's going on. It tells us where the problems are, where we can focus our attention. It also tells us where the successes are and see that our program is actually effective in those areas. So yes, it is hard to look at, Steve. It's very blunt, but it's important work. So thank you all. If you have any questions, please speak out or contact me by phone or email.
April, thank you and welcome. April just started with us and we appreciate it. And she's joined the family support team where we work with the, the interagency about these issues. So thanks, April.
Yeah. And I guess my question, you know, Andrea sort of hit on that, you know, as we look at what's going to happen in next year's survey with the pandemic. And I guess April, I'm just curious from your standpoint, like what, what is, what are you thinking is going to show up that we might want to be thinking about now? Like where do you think those pressures are on kids and behavioral? My question makes sense, but I'm sort of trying to crystal ball it a little bit, like where, where are you concerned with sort of the pandemic and?
Well, we know, we know that substance use misuse is up. And I think that that's happening with kids and that's a reflection on the stress and anxiety and depression that is also escalating. Mental health is taking quite a hit and I think we're going to see more with substance use. I know we are with the adults. But I expect that we'll probably see more of that with the kids. It's just under the surface. We don't always see it because we're so remote. But when I get talking with kids, their anxiety level is pretty, pretty peaked. So I think we'll see more. It'll be, I'm very interested to see what next year's YRBS will say.
Thank you. And I, I hope engaging at the superintendent level with wellness, with family support team and Hopington Cares. I hope that work continues because when a superintendent sits at a wellness committee, it just adds a lot of substance to it. And it's, so I hope those kinds of things continue. I've, it's been a privilege to work with Hopington Cares. I started the family support team nine years ago, eight years ago. And we've done some great things and being involved in wellness, it's the whole child stuff that we just appreciate. So it's been a great experience for me getting to know providers and interagencies and community work on this, what I consider a significant issue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, dwelling or maybe not dwelling. But thinking about one of the comments, Steve, that, that you made, just how hard it is, I think for parents to talk about these issues with their kids and why that is. And, and you know, you're a friendly guy and I'd go over and talk to you if I were entering the high school on those open houses. But I, I can understand and so I, I think that's a really tough nut to crack. I'd love to find a way or think through, and I'm sure you guys do, like how, how to get, how to get, how to get the information maybe into the parent's hands in a way that, and I don't know how to do it, but it is so important. And I think as a community member with kids in the high school, like I think about these things a lot, but having the, the data to sort of have, to look at it, understand. It's so important. And I guess I'm, I'm just thinking through your comment, it's, it isn't the most popular conversation to have with your kid, but it's so important. And I don't know, just thinking about how to empower all of us as parents to, to be more brave in sort of our conversations.
Yeah.
April?
I, I was just going to say, I've, I've been doing this for decades. And the, the one meeting that you have for parents, how to talk to your kids about drugs, nobody comes. This is nothing new. So we would, we would couch it with other things like how to raise kids in difficult times or how to set limits with your teenager, you know, some, some other topic. And you might get five or six when you did that. But I think maybe with remote, we could come up with some way to do some kind of a live webinar, record it, have it available. I mean, there are, there are good things that come out of this that we could possibly get our heads together and create something, interview other people that they can hear from. But it's tough.
One of the things we've tried is, and, and we had these discussions, right? If you go to YRBS, you know, event, then is your youngster use drugs and you're concerned, the anonymity. So we tried to publicize our stuff in Bo. So, you know, Bo people would come because it's anonymous and then we'll go to Bo's stuff and try to make it more regional. Because we did, we had some Bo people come to Dr. Andrews. We've tried to push that pretty hard. And, and Bo did the anonymous people screening and, and a couple of people from hop went because it's a little bit different. So we've tried scheduling it on open house. We've tried events, but we'll keep at it. And, and hopefully, as Andrea said, if you look at the data, I think you will want to talk to your kids. I just think you will, because it's, you know, it's, it's really important stuff. Even I, I mean, I'm sure we all do it. I, my daughter hates it when I say seatbelt and texting all the time. I mean, I, you know, all the time, she hates it, but I, I feel better if I tell her, make sure you wear your seatbelt. And his son too, he's 22. I told him the other day, put your seatbelt on.
Yeah, we, we talk about, you know, substance abuse. We talk about emotional, emotional and situations, you know, lead to depression and stuff for our, for our students and stuff. As you know, the world's changing where, you know, kids are being exposed to different things in our world. Have you seen an incline in emotional, but let's say the internet, you know, one thing about being a father, you know, I've had to caution my kid and where, on where they go on the internet because they can bump into the wrong person and, you know, honestly can, you know, be bullied or coped into something. But have you seen that with students where the emotional support on that, where they've had situations where they didn't know how to cope with that?
Are you directing that?
Um, this is sort of, this, this is related to that. It's, I have seen that and like just among, you know, people, my friends even, but I know that tonight isn't exactly about reforming the system or anything, but I did notice the part about the suspension for drug use. And I do agree that if somebody is, you know, caught using a substance, there should be a suspension. But I do think that students should feel as though they can come forward to the school and ask for help. Because I'm sure that there are people who, you know, can't afford really expensive, great treatment centers. And I think that probably a lot of people would benefit from that if there wasn't, you know, the fear of getting in trouble or having something on their record. So I don't know. That's just my opinion on it.
There is a self-reporting piece of the policy that if a student comes forward and goes to April and says, I need some help. There isn't, that's not the consequence piece. That's just the help piece. So Julia, we did put that in the policy about the self-reporting, self-seeking help. So thank you.
Okay.
Confidentiality is really imperative with substance use disorders. We really have to help people get honest and work on their stuff. So they've got to tell you everything, you know? So that, that's good.
The Hopington Town Library has anonymous people. Highly recommend it. And I watched it with my children. So highly recommend it. There's a little plug for Donna out there.
Any other, any other questions or thoughts? And Mia, I don't know if you have any, any thoughts? Or Juliette, any additional thoughts after seeing the data, if that's, if it speaks to you? No pressure. I just want to make sure if you had anything to add, that you had the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have anything super insightful to add about it.
Well, I have a quick question. Well, maybe not a quick question and maybe we will have a side conversation at some point. But when I was teaching psych, we talked a lot about priming behavior and how powerful that can be, particularly when it's a little bit covert. And we often talked about why we didn't do more of that in school. And I'm thinking of the sort of infamous study where you litter a paragraph with words like slow and creaky. And then you ask somebody to go down the hall and it takes them far longer than somebody who's got a paragraph that's littered with more bouncy words. So in, you know, in Montana, when they wanted people to slow down, instead of telling them to please slow down, they said 95% of people drive the speed limit, which is odd in Montana because I thought everybody sped there. But anyway. So is there, is there any research around, you know, using priming techniques in high schools that are part of what's going on now or?
I don't know that I've, I've heard it specifically as a priming skill or setup, but I do, I do know that a lot of the prevention education that we use is around telling kids, we're going to talk about drugs. We're going to talk about people's use and what is a problem and what, how do you recover from this and treating that disease model? But what we tell them too, is that most kids your age do not use. So when we're looking at YRBS, yes, you might see 10, 20, 30, maybe 40% of kids have tried something, but that's not necessarily the majority of people. So I don't give them data from the YRBS. That's really for, for folks that like us that are making decisions about programming and seeing the effectiveness of that. But with the kids, yeah, I think you're absolutely on the mark. Let's, let's talk about, let's talk about how to calm ourselves down. What are coping skills? What is a problem and where do you go to ask for help? And giving them the positive feedback that they need. I think that's, that's got a lot more mileage to it than making it into a big mountain. That's hard to, to take on, you know? I don't know if that really answers your question.
I mean, I think that, that the principle of priming behavior is a little bit different, but you and I will, we'll, we'll chat about that at, at another point in time.
That's good.
Yeah.
I, I have one more question and I'm just, when you look at the data and you sort of, you know, again, crystal ball a little bit ahead, like is there a trend or something that's trending? I, I think Steve, you mentioned energy drinks. I'm just wondering if there's, if there's something, you know, vaping a couple of years ago was a new thing and we saw the use skyrocket. I'm just curious, if you look at this data and know the students, are there, is there something that we should be thinking about now that, that's trending or that may become more prevalent in the near future?
April, do you have thoughts on that? What's like, because I, I still think, I mean, we, last year was before we went into pandemic, we were talking about the energy drinks and kids just really drinking a lot. And we had some instances on buses and trips and were kids. So.
So I do know caffeine, of course, is, is going to, it's a stimulant. So they're taking too much of that. The energy drinks are good for them. Vaping, very often, most of that stuff has nicotine in it. God only knows what else is in there. When there's other things in there like THC, it can be very powerful. I know I've seen kids rushed off to the hospital for vaping some of this stuff and they'll use somebody else's and not realize what's in it even. But yeah, I mean, addiction is there. Sugar is a gateway drug. Once you get yourself in a, a pattern of behavior, even if that's not doing you any good and you still don't stop, then you're, you know, you've got to look at all your, your risk factors that are included in that. But I do think the top two drugs that kids use probably, from what I saw in the YRBS and what I know statewide and nationally is alcohol and marijuana. And vaping can be a, a way to deliver that, not the alcohol, but the marijuana. Energy drinks are, my side job is I'm a professional musician and I go to a lot of weddings and I watch these young people during cocktail hour drinking a lot at the, the open bar and then popping down their energy drink to, they believe it'll offset it. So it's, it's not just the young people. It's, it's the twenties and thirty-somethings too, that think that these things are going to counteract each other. They really don't, but it's dangerous.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, April, for joining us and for sharing your thoughts. We really appreciate it. And thank you for all the important work that you're doing here in the district.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, April. We'll send you back down and you can, you can have a great night.
And thank you, Steve. I know that we, we didn't have that presentation two weeks ago, but I'm, I'm glad that we, we did it tonight. And that information will be on the website. I think it's really important. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So next on the agenda is items for board discussion. And so we're going to start with learning, operating in a global pandemic and I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Sure. Just part of the, of support of the high school model was the direction to report out at every board meeting on where we are and, and moving to synchronous learning and as well as just an update. So just the progress we've made in a couple of weeks. And just, there's really, we're looking at two different types of synchronous learning, right? One is when you have devices and that's like remote everywhere and others where you screen what's going on in the classroom. So the, the remote everywhere piece, obviously that's device dependent when we get there, but we are moving forward on the synchronous, the, the streaming of the classroom, if you will. So a little bit about where we are in the current model. The, the school has developed a lengthy matrix of and rubric on making, doing everything they can to support the, the kids being in the school who need to be in school. So that work is going, continuing, I should say. Just where we are on synchronous learning. So right after the meeting, Mr. Stone ordered some equipment, screens and microphones and cameras. He met with the technology committee. We has teachers in there to order some more equipment, met with the administration. So those orders have been put in. We've encouraged and tried to make connections for our teachers to talk with other district teachers who are working on the streaming. So we've expanded our professional learning. We've got, we're lining up. So we have seven teachers already who volunteered. So our first week of back in school will be synchronous for seven teachers as long as the equipment comes in. By then, and we do expect it to be in there. So we will have live feedback about teachers who are utilizing synchronous teaching and, and have some teacher leaders and, and develop that. So I think we are in full steam ahead. We did get some feedback. I guess Andrea and I got some feedback during the wellness committee about the status of kids and where we are in the straight eight and, and so. And I'll eagerly report out at our next meeting about the progress and you'll get steady reports. But since our last meeting, equipment for synchronous is ordered, professional development is being connected. Pilots are being established. So I believe the, the mandate of the board to look at this is, is moving forward.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions on, on sort of the, the, the education model at the high school? All right. So Steve, next up is.
I did have a question. I just couldn't get unmuted. I'm sorry. So my question is, I was running for the, the teachers who will be teaching synchronously, which I think is fantastic that we already have so many volunteers. When I'm, if you can just remind me, when are they going to start doing that? Is that when we return in January or now?
So I want to say it's the third week after Thanksgiving. So they're remote, the first two weeks after Thanksgiving. And then that first week back, they will, assuming, I don't want to 14th, Matt told me he expects the shipment of equipment to be like the 14th. So the next time that So the next time that we're in school, there will be, assuming we get the delivery. And this isn't like the Chromebooks. I mean, we have delivery dates on this stuff. So the next time we're in person, we will have synchronous learn.
Oh, great. Okay. That's, that's really helpful to know.
Just, and we're going to learn from those and we're going to work out the pieces. The other piece that we just, if, and we'll, and we'll see how far we can go. But we also have the staffing issue, just, you know, when we go full about having staff in our schools, supporting teachers who are so remote. Just, I don't, we, we've talked about that. I just don't want to lose sight of that. But we will have, our goal is at least seven teachers teaching synchronously. The next time we're in person at the secondary school.
I had one other question is, I understand that there's a, a matrix being developed for kids who would benefit from having in-school support during remote times. Um, who should parents be directed to talk to if they are needing additional support?
So I think the school counselors are receiving. And so it's, it's Beth, Jeff and Danielle. And certainly you can go to the administration too. But we're trying to develop supports for every grade level. So we have seventh graders, eighth graders, ninth graders. So they'll be together and we're having, so one of the hires that we're going to have tonight supports that model as well. Judy Walsh should be a remote learning specialist. But please reach out. Beth is middle school, Danielle and Jeff share the high school. But hopefully that's a conduit. And they do have regular student support team meetings to discuss this. And so I hope that's the conduit for it.
Super. Thank you.
That help?
Yep, totally.
Quick questions. Steve, what was the total? I know we approved like 15,000. What was the about dollar figure that we, we spent total to get us up and run just with the seven teachers?
I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you, but I think it was somewhere around 10 to 15. I don't know if, it's hard to, we've been ordering some stuff. I think that's, I think it's in that genre. And all that, I mean, remember, everything that can be, that is delivered and up by December 30, we'll go into the grant application. Either the 191 or the 10 million tranch. I like saying that, tranch.
And then my last question is before we implement it on the students, there's going to be some training among teachers and some other people on synchronized teaching. So there's kind of a flow. You know what I'm saying? Is there going to be some training?
So that's, we're trying to make connections between the teachers that are doing this to other schools. Okay. Like a math teacher, a math teacher over here and English teacher over here. And, and we have some staff, some people on staff who worked in V-Lax. Right? Who was doing this and some others who were doing this in some other areas. So we're doing some sharing of teacher leaders and looking outside as well. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does. If you need a guinea pig to be a remote learner again, you know, I'm your guy. And I'll gladly sit there and give you, I did do well.
You did well.
Just let me know. All right.
Any other questions at this point? If not, we'll move on to the community use of buildings. And I think when we were here two weeks ago, we, we talked about our, our own sports. And then we had a representative of HEISA and we, we had a conversation with HEISA about their desire to use facilities for, for basketball. So Steve, I'll give you an update.
Sure. And, and in the, in the, so just, just to rephrase, to reframe where we are. The only thing that we've done so far is allowed practices and open gyms. And that's the same thing for youth sports, same thing for our sports is that we haven't looked at and we'll come back, you know, at a, at a future date. Right now, there isn't any plans at all in my world, working with Skate, to have other community members come in our schools yet. And the Games Interest Classic and HIA aren't scheduled to start. The earliest could be January 10th. And there's a lot of obviously space between now and then. And so the, so in the, in the packet was, is a draft of an agreement. Dan and Chris, Skate, Michelle, Noah and Nicole Masters, our, our nurse, who's our kind of our nurse coordinator of COVID, all had a chance to look at that. So it's a 20 student limit. It's 15 minutes between sessions to clean. It's district training of the coaches. They have to have someone who's been trained in cleaning. It's high touch areas and cleaning bathrooms. And, and so it's written to make sure everybody, I sign off and the director signs off. And, and all involved believe it is a system that has been put in place to support safe practices. And I think at the top it says only for practices and open gyms right now. And we revisit, you know, because if, if we do bring in other communities, then we have a lot of issues around fans, right? And around officials. And it just expands our oversight and our, we have to add other safeguards. And, and that wasn't, that's not where we are yet. Does that make sense? This is just about allowing practice, open gym movement and we are. And Rob asked a question and we're, we're getting some feedback. And we, it's similar to what we're doing in our schools. We're starting a basketball unit, right? We're not doing games yet. We're not doing, we're doing drills and, and things like that. And if we get to that next level, you know, it'll be coming back to the board for support if we get to that next, when, get to that next level. Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense. Yep. And questions, comments, suggestions from the board?
Oh.
No, go for it, Rob. You're on it.
This one's been really hard for me since our last board meeting. And the more I thought about it and, you know, the question that I asked Steve to ask the principals was pretty simple. Would kids be allowed to play basketball in gym class at Harold Martin Maple Street Middle High School with masks, but no other restrictions? And I've not quite got a clear answer to that. And I think Steve gave me somewhat of an answer that they're doing some drills. And I'm guessing that means they're more than six feet apart. But it seems like indoor sports brings us to a point where we've said schools are open and we're doing our best to keep everybody safe and, and so that we can keep schools open. But that means masks and six feet. But a policy of opening the gym and opening winter sports is going to collapse that six feet foot zone, even with a mask. You know, and Dan had said to me last week that, you know, I had said, when we talked about changing the middle, high school models, that we should listen to the experts. And by those experts, I meant the people who have been teaching there since the last March. You know, literally a hundred professionals that had kind of learned what was working and whatnot. And any sort of, you know, intimated that, that I should listen to, to this recommendation as, as the experts have spoken. So I spent a bunch of time after our meeting, trying to see what the experts are saying about youth sports. And boy, I'll tell you, there's, there's not a lot of experts that are out there saying yea or nay. They're kind of running for cover and saying, these are things that are, that you should do. But is anybody categorically saying you should do this or you should not do this? Yesterday on NPR, the assistant epidemiologist for the state in New Hampshire, forgetting her last name, but she was asked about, you know, should people have Zoom meetings? Or should they meet in person? And she simply said, if you don't need to meet in person, you shouldn't meet in person. Now that's not talking about sports and, and all those things, but kind of gave me a whiff of, you know, what's going on out there. So sorry for that long lead up. My, my great concern here is that I think we as a board should be consistent with what we say our policy is during the school day. And that needs to be consistent with what happens at after school. And there's been some discussion about, well, this is voluntary. For me, that's sort of a moot point. Whether something is voluntary or not, doesn't change the public risk. Because it's not just that child that's putting themselves at risk or their family. They by extension are putting everybody in our community at risk. So yeah, this is cognitive dissonance 101. I really, really, really want to say yes, but my brain is telling me that the answer should be no. And it's really hard to say no. I think we all know that as parents and professionals that it's a lot easier to say yes than to say no. But so that's core on that. And that's why I asked the question.
So Rob, can I ask, can I just ask you a clarifying question? Is, is it, is it no? I guess are you separating the, the use of our buildings for like HEISA with our, with sort of the open gym for our teams, like our school teams? Or is it, or is it more like in your, like right now, it's more of a blanket? I don't want to use word like, but is that, are you thinking of the whole, like all indoor sports?
I'm, you know, I don't know what open gym looks like. But if in my mind, open gym means kids are, have their own ball and they're, they're shooting free throws and from the arc and, and whatnot, but they're keeping their six feet of space. Then I think we're borderline saying that's similar to what we would allow during the school day. But again, it's a consistency thing that if we've told the community, the reason that only 50% of our population is in school is because we believe in six feet and masks. I think we've become very borderline extremely inconsistent if we're saying after school, there is a potential of 35 or 40 high school, middle high school students who are going to not be held to that standard. And then on weekends, there's going to be 150 or so kids through, you know, upper Harold Martin Maple Streets that are not going to be held to those standards. So, you know, I, I don't want to belabor it, but I think we spent a long time trying to get to where we are now to be, that these are the conditions under which we're open. And it's really hard for me. And, and I, you know, I, I understand all of the reasons why it's a good idea. I mean, I don't think anybody disagrees that yes, athletics is a great idea. But we are in the midst of what we're in and it's ramping up. It's not ramping down.
Other thoughts? Thank you, Rob.
Well, I'll ask my question now. It's a little, it was a little more very specific, but I'll still ask it. When I was reading through the draft agreement, I noticed point nine was community use is limited to weekend and school vacation days. And I didn't know what community use meant. Does community use mean HEISA? Or did community use mean something else?
So this is a, a youth sports agreement between us and HEISA. Yes. So we felt we could not manage, like in the old days, six o'clock at night at Harold and get it ready for the next day or eight o'clock at night, having community use. So for the community, we limited this just to the off days that we could manage and they could clean it. So yes, so for HEISA, it's only, and working with HEISA, it's, you know, in December, during the holiday break, they can come in, but it's not an after school. It's not days we have school.
So already HEISA would be significantly limited opposed to like last year where kids would, like you were saying, like my, my kiddos would go in twice a week at six or seven PM at night. None of that is going to be happening.
We, we, we felt we could not manage the cleaning, the, the stuff. You know, we have to clean the buildings all night. We can't do additional at nine o'clock at night. It's just different than it was. So we, we felt just for Saturday, Sundays and vacation days.
Okay. And then how many kids are usually in, on a basketball team? Just 11, right? And two adults? Is that how much?
Yeah. Issue. So.
I don't know.
So this is like, they're like Skate would, they'd have a fourth grade session. And there'd be 24th graders. That's what he felt that's 24th graders would play basketball on Saturday morning from eight to nine 30 with a 15 minute break and playing something like that. Fifth graders, he planned on doing by grade level. And they'd be, and they'd, you know, be splitting if they, and we can, you know, we, and the board could say. And I do think, you know, I was a varsity basketball coach for 11 years. If I, if, in order to get kids in and moving, we had to say, if you told me that in, in, you know, at this level, you have approval of open gym and practices, keeping six feet apart. There's a lot you can do. There really is. There's shooting, there's defensive drills, there's weaves, there's fast breaks. There's a lot of stuff you can do. I mean, you can't play five on five. But I, and Dan and I spoke this morning and, and, and at the beginning, if that's where we are, that's a good thing, by the way. That's movement and that's balls and that's kids doing it. And then we can see where we go. So that is not to me, you know, an awful experience. We did five man weaves, three on twos and two on ones. We can do a lot of stuff in that hour and 15 minutes. And, and it's better, and, and as a basketball coach or as a dad, it's better than nothing. A lot, it's significantly better than saying, you know, nothing at all. And I do have full faith that people wouldn't do the best they can to implement the board policy. Like, I mean, Dave is running basketball right now. I didn't, I haven't, I haven't got my emails yet, Rob, from Maple and Harold, but we did get it back from Dave at the high school. And they are doing a basketball unit and they're staying six feet apart. But I, I don't, I didn't get Jordan and Steve Sherman, just to be honest with you. The only one that I got back in time, you know, that I looked at this and he doesn't, I'll look tomorrow morning pretty early, as you know. But that's where we're at.
It was only 4:27 when you looked, you know, I mean.
We got one back and, you know, if, if, from now until the next board meeting or the next month, if you want to do, keep six feet and do that. It's not perfect to be honest, but it's not horrible either. It means we can shoot, we can run, we can work and, and, and we can enjoy movement in a gym. And the high school can't start till December 30. And if open gym means right now, we're not comfortable with playing and scrimmaging, that's still okay. I promise, you know what I mean? And I did coach varsity basketball for nine years, JV basketball for two years. And I could run a good practice, keeping kids six feet away. Good basketball stuff.
I mean, I, I'll, I have to admit that I'm, I'm sort of where Rob is on this. And I mean, I, I, I think what you just proposed, Steve, is a good alternative. Like I'm very, I guess currently, when I look at, you know, where we are as a state and where we are as a county and where we know we are as a town. I mean, I just think we, part of our responsibility is to do everything we can to, to enforce masks and to keep people six feet apart. And we know that's what we all need to do because that's what we all need to do. And so I, I do, I do find it, especially now when we're, you know, we're, we're trending in the wrong way to, to loosen up on our enforcement of those, of those rules. We should actually be, in my view, strengthening them. And so I, I do have the, why would we allow indoor basketball? You know, with, with the normal way you play basketball and in the time when we, we know through what we're being told and what we see, that that's probably, probably not the lowest risk endeavor to do at these times. So, I mean, I could support keeping the open gym as long as they're not, you know, people are six feet apart and they're doing drills. I, I'm less sure that I support, you know, weekend community use of the facility when I guess I have to be convinced that we, that the rules that we would put in place are, are going to be enforced. If we're going to go that way. And this isn't to say people wouldn't if we asked them to. I just, I would just, I guess I would just want to make sure that we're enforcing this, this six feet separation. And it's really drills and it's not, it's not weekend scrimmaging or, or HEISA. And that can change, you know, we, you know, we could level the, level, level the curve and loosen up over time if the case numbers allow us to. But it just, it doesn't feel like that's where we are. So.
Happy to add that to the agreement and talk with Skate and see if they sign that. A couple of the, just a quick things, the entire division three school did, did support mask wearing. So there is no school, our cohort did, you know, but then we, remember I talked about, Rob, the, the tournament going to play somebody, the entire division. So there wouldn't be, I mean, and I know we're a long way from that. But at least every team will be playing with masks through the entire season, which, which I couldn't say in the fall. You with me?
Yep. Thanks for doing that.
Yep. No.
You know, I, I think Rob took a lot of what I was going to say because he worried much better than I ever could. So thank you, Rob. You know, when we had this discussion months ago, I'm sorry, weeks ago, we were at 12 cases in Hopton. And today I believe we're at 20 or around there. And, you know, I pause, you know, I absolutely love sports. If you guys, anyone knows me, I'm the biggest sports guy on this board. I challenge the competition on that. But for me, it's okay to say no. Because in the end, it's important for us, you know, to have these kids in school and, and to not eliminate, and to eliminate any risk, you know, when it comes to them losing out on education. I want the kids in school. I really do because they, they, they need that. And I agree with, you know, every community member saying their child needs to have, you know, physical exercise. But, you know, there's other ways around doing that, you know? And I'm just, there's a lot of things that I worry about enforcing this when people aren't around. And it's a big concern, you know, as a, as a parent and as a board member, you know, I've been part of HEISA for many, many years. And I've seen simply a lot of things not followed through that's been agreed upon unfortunately. And I pause, you know, given a yes, when I've seen it. And I pause, you know, given a yes, when I've seen it my own self, that not everyone agrees to wearing a mask. And it takes one person for our kids potentially to be out of school. You know, as an elected board member, you know, I firmly believe, you know, I love sports, but you know, education over sports, you know, our students need to get this education as much as they can in person. And I just don't want to roll the dice where our kids are out of school because we are pushing the envelope when it comes to indoor sports. It's going to be okay for one year. I, it's okay to say no as, as a board to say, listen, we are, we really want to put your kid through a good education and that missing out on sports this one year. So we keep it in school. It's okay to say no. And that, that's, that's how I'm feeling right now.
So I just want to make sure I understand where we're headed. I mean, I hear everything everyone's saying. So high school starts in two weeks. Is that right, Steve? High school basketball?
Yep.
The 30th. So this is our last meeting right before that?
Yes.
It's one thing to tell. I mean, yes, you can run a varsity practice for some period of time in a six foot model. But at some point you can't, I take it.
Correct.
And so it's one thing that we're talking about HEISA, but this, this conversation, and I'm not saying I disagree with anything that's been said. I just wanted to make sure we're clear, is merging into the bigger question of what are we doing with our high school teams? Because maybe I'm wrong, but it's hard for me to picture that by the middle of December, we'll be in a better situation. Either we'll be in a worse situation or we'll be where we are now. So I just, I guess I'm just raising that, that, that that's what this conversation started with, you know? Should we agree with the HEISA agreement? But I think we're actually asking probably the more difficult question of are we going to, what are we going to do about our high school teams?
Yes. Thanks, Seth, because that was, I was about to seek clarification exactly as you did. And maybe we could do them separately. And the first one is, and I guess it's on the youth sports HEISA agreement. Because I do think, you know, we have, we have, we have a proposal, something written up. And so we can either accept a proposal, we can either, you know, edit that proposal or we can just say not now. And I guess I'm just looking for, what I'm hearing from the board, it sounds sort of like a not now. But I don't, I guess it's more of a question now. I just, where are we feeling on HEISA? And then I think the Seth point, we should talk about, you know, our, our, our school sports. But how are folks feeling about, you know, the agenda item right now in youth, the community use of the building for, for HEISA?
I'll break the ice. As of right now, Jim, I am a no.
I'd be the same.
So I'm, I guess I'm feeling a little different. I think seeing that it's on the weekends and weekends and school vacation days with a limited number of kids and masks and six feet apart, I would actually be comfortable with this for now. Personally, I feel like we're, we're going to be, I worry that eventually it's going to be shut down anyhow with the, also with the way that the cases are going. And so I see kids out, you know, playing at the high school and in the skate park. And, you know, I think for me at least, having a weekend hour long HEISA, six feet apart, personally, I, I would be okay with that. That's sort of rambly.
Seth?
I guess I'd be comfortable if I have full confidence that we could achieve everything Andrea just said. My concern is, have they been a HEISA coach? These are not our, right? I mean, these are parent volunteers with little kids. And it's not like the high school varsity coach. So I'm a little concerned that we can adhere to what we put on the paper, not because of any ill will by anyone, but it's just hard to manage. And so I guess at this point I'd be reluctant to get, to say, go ahead. I'd be willing to revisit it as we see how things unfold. But where the official, where everyone is telling us, stay away from your family on Thanksgiving. Do not be in an indoor place with, you know, people on even a given day to say, let's all get in the gym. And we'll have a lot of rules. I'd love to say I'm sure we can follow them. I'm just not sure.
And I, I think I'm, I, I'm there as well. I, I just, I'm not comfortable, you know, as, you know, it's our job to, you know, we manage the school buildings. Not directly, but and I, I just, I'm not sure now that I would feel okay as a manager, opening up our school buildings to this type of activity. And I guess I would be open. You know, if, if we're seeing cases go down and we can loosen up, that, that feels like a good time. But right now, as things, as I think our, at least I feel part of our job is to tighten things up a little bit. This doesn't feel like the, the best next step. And so I guess what I'm, what I'm sensing, the, the clear consensus of the board, Steve, I think right now is, is is probably no to the, you know, the HEISA or no, not now. And I guess monitor and see where, where we go and potentially come back.
I will let them know.
And so the, the second piece, I, I think, you know, what Seth brought up is just around the, the varsity and we know how we want to, to manage that. It's not on the agenda, but I think if they're going to, well, they're going to be starting practicing in two weeks. It's, it's probably our duty to provide some guidance. And so what I'm hearing from the board, you know, is, is can we, you know, we can start with the six foot separation and have the varsity start there. And the question really is that practicable? And then how long can we do that for? And so what sort of guidance do we want to give our, our coaching staff and our players? Or maybe that's it. Are folks comfortable with, with that guidance to say for now, you know, for, for your first couple of weeks of practice? Six foot drills, but it, it just means we're going to revisit it in a couple of weeks. I think that's going to get old pretty quick for coaches and players.
I, I'm going to be comfortable, you know, like you guys, I've coached the HEISA kids, I've coached high school kids. Played a little teeny bit of basketball in my day. It is a very different animal at that age level. And I do think that, you know, what we learned in the fall is kids wanted to play and they're willing to do what was necessary to make that happen, even if it's in, you know, constraints, so to speak. I'm still not super comfortable with it, but I'm far more comfortable with knowing that it's a small high school group in a big gym, wearing masks and the Steve Ambulance six feet apart practice plan. So. And then we re, then we reevaluate.
Yep. I mean, I agree with Rob. I mean, at a six foot separation, it's equivalent to gym class, I suppose. I do think that the kids will listen to their vars, their high school or middle school coach on what is expected. There's just a different level of, I don't know, respect or whatever, you know, because those coaches hold, hold those positions. But I think we have to be clear, this is no promise that where this ends. Because we are going to have to decide again. Are we comfortable with scrimmaging? And then we're going to decide after that, are we comfortable with games? And each of these decisions adds new complexity. And we will have different data and we will be in different positions at different times. So that's right.
Norm or Andrea?
Sure. I agree with Jim and Rob, you know, we, you know, to be quite frank, you know, the maturity level of a high school student to fall through with a coach and not run around and not listen to their coach at the younger age. I think, you know, we have a little bit more maturity level there where I believe that they can follow through with the safety protocols. I do want to continue to monitor it, like Seth said. And I want to be really clear, you know, Dan ran a really good, ran a really good soccer season. I was very pleased with that. And, and it was run well. And I firmly believe he can do the same thing to start basketball to start. But I definitely want us to continue to watch the cases and really deliver the mission statement that our goal is to try and keep these kids in school and not have sports taking them out. So I just really want to send that mission to the board that we want to continue to bring that home. So I'd be comfortable to start this way. You know, I owe it to the juniors and seniors, you know, you know, those are the ones that need this right now. Try, we can try, but I think that's the way to go.
Yep. I'm comfortable with the six feet and whatnot.
All right. So it feels like the consensus of the board is to continue the open gyms. They, they let the teams start their practice, but, but, you know, masks and six feet. And then maybe at our next meeting, a couple of weeks, we can have Dan join us and we can sort of talk through, you know, next steps and what it looks like, where the cases are. And, and maybe provide him some more guidance and about, you know, what the next step with, with the, with the teams are, and then what other districts are starting to think about. I think will probably be a good conversation for the agenda.
You got it. And I will communicate with Dan and is, and remember, we did start middle school this week, you know, in the past, but I'll make sure that the six feet and all that is, and we are full masks and all that fun stuff. And I'll let Skate know.
Thanks, Steve. Well, and we've been, we've been sort of talking around it, but the next item is the, the decision making matrix. And I know we, Steve, you had to make a decision today based on the matrix. And so I don't know if you want to talk about that and then, and then share where we are at.
Sure. So, and I shared this with the community in an email the other day, and I'll make sure it's not more prominent on the website. Again, I get some website work to do. So we are known what's, we're at 19.1 cases per 1,000 in Merrimack County as reported by the DHHS daily briefing, which puts, puts us at accelerated spread, which I would call orange or mustard or something. But it's, it's the third, red is the 25 plus. This is 10 and 24. And so we have level one, two and three. And level one, we had one, we had one employee to have a positive piece today at Maple Street School. And so though the, the matrix said close for two days, because we have the weekend to continue the cleaning, we'll be back open on Monday. We have a little bit, it's so the, why do we give them the day or two? It's for contact tracing and cleaning. And we can do both of those things by the time Monday comes. This was yesterday, you know, to, we have, we would have closed for Thursday, Friday. You with me? It's been, it's, that's where we are. I've worked with Nicole and Amy. We're contacting parents. I did the all call. And we believe that we'll be open on Monday. But we're at 19.1 accelerated spread, tend between 10 and 24.
Thanks, Steve. Any, yeah, any questions for Steve?
I have a question. I always have questions. Steve, is the state helping with contact tracing anymore? Or is that now something that only the school is doing?
So they are for, they do support and give us guidelines for kids and I think for elderly, but I don't think for, and now for the adult one, because it's connected to a school, we did get, so Nicole calls the state, helps us through guidelines on when were the symptoms, when was the positive, you go backwards to work on the six feet for 10 minutes. But it's always our work because we know the class roster. We know, you know, the configuration, how many kids in the class, but the state did help us develop the guideline in the days, the time period of which we have to count the 10 minutes. And there's, you know, tonight I got Bo Elementary is remote tomorrow for a similar reason. And I talked to our bus contract manager, Washington, New Hampton School. One of my superintendent colleagues called me from Moulton Borough, they're out. So it's just becoming, you know, it's, it's not that unusual that we're out for a day.
Any other, any other questions or thoughts on the matrix and where we're at? All right. So we'll move on to building committee update. And Norm?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll be real quick. So right now, what's going on over at Harold Martin is that we're, work has gone away with fire suppression with the pump. Something that'll be finished in the middle of, so in December. You guys can see that there's more exterior wall framing that's been happening over there. You can see it's still wrecked. That was in the beginning of the Steve's presentation today. And things are going well over there. Roofers are continuing to work on, on the roof drains of the new addition. We decided in our construction meeting this past weekend, Jim, that we are going to move forward with a hub panel over in Harold Martin. The total cost will be about $14,935. It is for replacement of the intercom system over at Harold Martin. They, they need to get behind the, the walls before they start putting stuff on, putting all the wire and stuff behind there. And due to a little bit long lead time, they had to make sure that they ordered that stuff and got it in there. It's, was already bid out as a part of the project. So we already had a low cost bid on this. And so we had to get a jump on it this past Monday to get going on that. Work's still going over, over at the high school and a little more work over at Maple Street for the roof. But everything else is going according to plan. Steve, did I miss anything?
Great.
Okay. So.
That's great.
Yeah. The most important thing is, Jim, on the fire suppression is really, we're really trying to get that in towards the end of the year because we want to capitalize on that grant from the, from the state. So that's something that was very important that we, we made a motion earlier as our first add all. We really want to capitalize on that in BPS and Gordon and everyone is working to get that grant. And I'm very happy to say that.
That's great. Any questions for Norm on the billing? Great work to you and to the, the whole team. It's coming along great. Next up is the budget committee update.
Yes. So we had the budget committee meeting last night. It was great to see them again. I'll be seeing them quite a bit in the next couple of months. They asked a couple of questions, which I need to discuss with Rob and with the finance committee and some other questions with Michelle that I need to bring to them. Part of the most important thing to discuss here is that they have accepted that we will be presenting the budget to them on January 13. I do want to say that they were, some people were disappointed that we could not do it earlier than that. And I, I understand that and respect that. I had to explain to them that we just wouldn't have the appropriate information in order for them to look at. And also that we'll be having a new budget presentation that Rob and Stephen and myself and Michelle are working on. There's a couple of things that, you know, I need to bring to the finance committee in order to maybe give them a little of a, an idea what the new budget presentation will look like. But other than that, it went really well, Jim, in that our, our budget presentation to them will be on January 13.
Thanks, Norm. That's, that's great. Cause I know, you know, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, but having that extra time is really important to our process. So thanks for, thanks for helping make that happen. Any other questions for Norm on the budget committee?
When we're, we're bringing it to them at the time that we usually do, correct? This is not like an additional week.
The calendar's funky. I think Steve, Steve can kind of vouch for that. It's a funky calendar. So it is the second week, correct? Is normally a second week?
Nor, always been the second week. Always. Now they tried to go earlier, but it's, it's just the way the calendar goes. And we've always made it. And there's actually a couple of weeks off in there too, so that we can get that Michelle and I and Norm go. But yeah, it's, it's not anything.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Sure.
All right. Finance committee, Rob.
Okay. So the recap from the finance committee. The one we, we got a, a nice view of what the, I'm going to call it the programmatic grade level budget for each building would look like and what that model would be. And that looks really, really promising. I think the community will be pleased to see a version of numbers in that form. So that's, that's underway and moving ahead. And thank you, Michelle, very much for doing the work to make that happen. And we talked about a series of Warren articles that we might see coming forward. And I'll just give you a quick snippets of those. So the first one was about the change in state law that allows us to retain up to 5% of any overage instead of two and a half percent. The key part of the verbiage there is that it would give the school board, you know, up to the amount permitted by law instead of a number. Because if that was in the language now, as Steve noted, we wouldn't have to have the Warren article, but it's not. So we need to make the change. So somewhere down the road, a board will thank us for that perhaps. We talked about another Warren article in terms of what to do with the interest on the bond. So we've got a whole bunch of money sitting in the bank that has not been expended and it is earning interest. But we do need to have a Warren article that would give us the right to spend that on the bond, on the building projects. We talked a little bit about, you know, what else could be done with it if you didn't do that. And, you know, it could go to fund balance. It could go to Article 10. But both Steve and Michelle made a strong case that it makes more sense to spend it on alts. And, you know, as a hedge against future capital improvement projects that we would have to spend the money anyway. So that will be coming forward. And then there was a Warren article on the technology capital reserves. And, you know, specifically, this is getting at, we we expended a bunch of money to get the school district to a one to one model. So now we have to think about how to fund that down the road as, you know, they probably a four year life cycle for most of those machines. And how are we going to roll that out and keep that going? We talked about this being a reserve for that. We also talked a little bit about, or I brought up a model of, you know, students paying a portion. And I guess, you know, Steve said that in Bedford, that's part of what they do where kids pay upfront so much. And that sort of creates a little pot that goes back into purchasing new machines. So we're looking at a couple of things there, but that was the Warren article. And then I think the last one, and Steve, you might need to correct me, was about a we need a Warren article to accept the CARES Fund and the Supplemental Response Fund. Is that correct? Or are my notes getting washy there?
Yeah, that's what we're doing tonight. That's the public hearing for tonight.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that that was not.
It's not for the annual meeting, it's tonight.
Strike that.
No, but we were doing this tonight, so.
Yeah. And then we spent some time watching Norm trying to find his PS five on his secondary screen, but it was all good. He's still hard at work. So, yeah, no, it's good. Any, any questions?
I have a question. Um, I just actually just wanted to clarify something because I think oftentimes when folks hear warrant articles are coming up, they naturally assume that these are monetary things that this is like, we are looking for more money. But by the sounds of it, we're going to have one warrant article that is no money involved at all. It is just to change the wording on something that we already have. And one warrant article saying that we can spend money that we've already created in interest. Okay. And then the technology CIP. So I just wanted to hyper clarify that.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, we'll make the point on the Warren article regarding the change from two and a half to five, that, you know, there are other options that overage money could be expended or could go into the the fund balance, you know, and, you know, and then this gives us the option to to load up Article ten to as a hedge against future tax rate.
How much? I'm just curious on the interest. How how much, how much interest are we, how much are we thinking?
Five to ten thousand.
Five to ten thousand, okay.
Yeah.
Enough to enough to buy two rooms of carpet.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah, of the flooring. Big fan of the floor.
If I could inject one more thing, it's my understanding that we move forward with a warrant for invested in technology, it'd be treated like like the repair maintenance, right, Steve? We have a public hearing and we would describe to the public exactly what we withdrawn from it and just like that, like we post it and everything. So it'd be a whole new, new thing for the district.
You got it.
Thank you.
I'd just like to voice my support, Rob, for the the option of having students pay in to that. I I really support that. I think that that is a great partnership. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, we talked about it and and I I like the idea because I think that you've got some skin in the game. And I think that helps you take care of the machine a bit more. You can buy it out at the other end. Just to play devil's advocate, because, you know, we're no longer on stone and tablet. This is kind of like, we don't ask kids to pay for their textbooks. But they also don't have that textbook for four years with, you know, all of the things that they can do with it. So there is a little bit of give and take there and I, and you know, I think that there could also be, obviously, that would need to be based on somewhat the ability to pay. So perhaps some kids in families would not be expected to do that. We'd have to create some benchmarks there. That's my thought. This is all talking out loud. Or thinking out loud.
I'll bring the model to the next finance committee, Rob, so you can take a look at list a model. I did talk to Matty Stone. And we weren't sure of any other models, but we do have that one. So I'll bring it.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other, any other thoughts? I just, thanks, Rob and Norm and Steve and Michelle for all the work that you're doing on the budget and finance stuff. This is really important and really good, good work. So I for one really appreciate it. And I really love the idea of the technology reserve fund. It is, it, you know, we need to put money aside because we're, we're, we're getting all these new resources. So it makes a ton of sense. That's great. Next item is school board schedule. And I think that's, is that Steve?
Sure. And it was just, I got a little nervous when Rob started planning of something on a Thursday between now and and Christmas. That made me nervous. So I want to make sure that after Thanksgiving, every Thursday for a while, we'll be booked for the Hopkin Town School Board as we dig in a budget. And so that was really just to make sure it was on all your schedules because I got scared. And then the other.
We have the twenty fourth off, Steve?
Yeah, well, yeah, but we moved that to the twenty third, just in case we need it, you know.
I'm available on the twenty fourth.
So if I wanted that, just to make sure that was on your calendars, because the next, our next meeting after this will be the presentation of the superintendent's budget. And then we go every Thursday for a while so we can meet as what Norm talked about the Wednesday, second Wednesday in January. The other piece is just to give you a heads up, a little bit of change in the calendar will be coming forward. The twenty one, twenty two calendar will be coming forward at the next meeting. It was supposed to come to this one, but it were fine. We just have to have it done by the last meeting in December. But really, it was just to make sure it was on your schedules. That's all.
I thought we just did a budget. No, just kidding. All right. All right. Anything else on schedule? People comfortable? All right, so move on to personnel. Steve.
Yeah, just quick personnel. Just Christine Ball, who's been our longtime executive assistant administrative assistant at Harold Martin with Mr. Croza is submitted her resignation and she's able to find a job within her professional field, her training. We absolutely adore Ms. Ball and the impact that she coached for us and she did a lot for us. But certainly happy for her that she can go to the career that she was been trained for. And so Mr. Croze is looking for that replacement as we speak. So that's tonight. Our our technology specialist, data specialist, a long time, I think twenty eight years, maybe, or twenty years, Karen Pond, who's been, I've learned so much from Karen. She does all our data. And so she is resigning and retiring in this, this timeline was to get through the October submissions for the data with and train. And so we, she was gracious to help us plan with Matt with that department. And I think at the next meeting, we will have the transition of where we are with a change in staff to accommodate. Because this was well planned, getting this through the data entry or the data submission, sorry, beginning of the year, all that fun stuff. So those come tonight. Everybody, why don't we just keep rolling? So we have a a remote learning specialist, as I spoke to earlier, as we support youngsters either in our building or if we go to the more synchronous world, we're supporting classrooms when teachers are remote. If you remember, this was a new classification of employee that we worked together with the MOA with the Hopkins Educational Support Staff, Judy Walsh. And then we're nominating and we'll continue to nominate Schedule Bs. And as I wrote in board notes, though we're nominating plays and musical and athletics because of the MOA working conditions negotiated with the Hopkins Education Association, the board does have the ability to revise the contract based on the number of weeks if it gets abridged due to pandemic. So this is this is not a, we're offering a contract, but we have negotiated the ability to adjust based on a shortened experience due to the pandemic. Does that, does that sound familiar, Andrea and Jim? Did I describe that? Okay?
You did. I think we used to call it a force majeure to go along.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I love that.
I don't think we, I don't think we can call it that anymore.
No, we can't. But good work. You get a ding ding for the force majeure call. So those are coming tonight and we're included in the packet. And everybody okay with those? And they are talking about the plays. I love the creativity with Bridget and the staff and Paula and Kevin about six feet apart doing plays and maybe if a musical, doing some independent film, you know, video and but they're working on it and they and they're, 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 they're into it. Also, just the last thing under personnel, the early retirement calendar. Submissions had to be provided to me and the board by November fifteenth. So that submission for the Hopkins Educational Association Early Retirement Program, the submission period is closed and we've had five staff members initiate the process. And and at some point in the next, and so the, and I think I wrote about it in board notes. So the contract obligates the Hopkin Town School Board to award three. And the board can go higher, can offer it to more than three, but has to do a minimum of three. And typically, Michelle and I work together on this and we make a decision around the, you know, in the next couple of weeks about offering. But because there's five, the board has to offer by January fifteenth. And the contract is, and I maybe this is why this was in there. We, the board can't offer two now or three now and then two later. It has to be offered and simultaneously. Which I always wondered how you do that. Do I send an email at the exact same time or? But so we may wait a little bit as the fund balance, you know, we can look and we can project because if the board was interested, expanded beyond three, we have up until January fifteenth to make that decision to offer. And then they have, then, so it's three part, they apply, board offers and they accept or decline, and that has to be done by March first. So it's the November fifteenth, January fifteenth, and Michelle will kick me long distance if I'm wrong, but I think I'm okay on the deadlines. It's November fifteenth, January fifteenth, March one. And so we may want to hold to the offer for a little while as we look at where we are, if the board is interested in going beyond the three. Does that make sense?
Yes, you explained it very well.
Okay. And I, and I think I'm accurate on that date, but it's not going to, I'll verify by next week if my next meeting. I mean, I know it's not December fifteenth. I'm hundred percent sure of that.
Before we move on, any questions or comments on on any of the personnel items in early retirement?
I just want to, so I do a little thank you to Christine Ball. I would forget to pick up my children about once a year. And she was always very gracious calling as I would yell into the phone and drive there. So I I just, I wish her just the best.
Thank you.
Steve.
Oh, you can go first.
I was a question about the early retirement and funds available to do that and where you could draw funds if the board were to choose to expand from three to more. And I'm just thinking the actuarial process down the road. And you know what we might save. So how do, where can we draw funds from if we wanted to meet all five requests?
So Michelle does a lot of things well. One of the things she does well is she monitors where we are in fund balance. And for example, like you alluded to, the the amount the board set aside in technology, if we didn't need that, the board has full authority to transfer money from any line to this line. And that's so in the past, when the boards exceeded it, sometimes it's it's within that budgeted amount because, as you know, if you retire at fifty five, it's it's a higher budget hit than if you retire at sixty four. And so as we get there, and it's it's a declining award because the you save more frankly, if someone retires at fifty five than you do at sixty four. So but the the board can transfer funds and look where we are in fund balance. If there's a lot of fund balance projected January first, you could direct Michelle to to say, look, let's do four. And and then eventually Michelle does budget transfers and those are all public. She does the trans, remember, we did a few, I don't know how many last year, Michelle, three or four, I think. And but it's all a public board action. Superintendent recommends, you know, and to fund the early retirement. So it's any unspent fund is eligible to be transferred into the salary line to pay for increased early retirement. The only decision is it you have to make it by January fifteenth.
Your dates are all right, Steve.
Nice. I nailed it?
Nice.
Love that.
Maybe we can have a, as a part of our next finance committee, a look at the the down the road actuaries on savings and how that might impact, you know, future budgets during three years as things get.
Michelle is. She's done a great job. I love that idea because Michelle put together the savings, the costing spreadsheet as part of the contract because the early retirement has to be a financial benefit to the Hopkins School District or the Hopkins School District can simply not fund it. So that if it's not a financial advantage for the district, that there is a governor to, to, you know, to the program. And Michelle has to update it because, as you know, health insurance is a piece of the savings. And that's what Michelle has to adjust that salary table, right, Michelle, with health insurance costs and some projected pieces. It's one of the things I like watching Michelle do because she looks out and projects and puts in a lot of data.
That'd be right. Thanks.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say the same thing, Rob. I'd like to be able to see that and be able to show people, you know, we do four or five, you know, what the savings is in the scope of the budget. That'd be, that'd be awesome. Thank you for mentioning that.
All right, if everybody's good, we'll move on under financial.
The first item is just if there's any further discussion related to the public hearing that was held about receiving funds, make sure you guys were all set for your action items.
Yeah, I just want to echo, I think Norm might have said it during the 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 public hearing, but just, you know, really thank Michelle for the clarity of the accounting and showing us where everything's going. It's, it's, it's great to see all those line items and being so clear. So thank you, Michelle.
And the next one, and we alluded in the public hearing, due to the availability of the Supplement Public School Response Fund, the money for the energy recovery ventilator at Harold Martin now can come from either the CARES Grant or the next tranche. Therefore, we would like to rescind the action item on taking funds out of the maintenance trust because it's not necessary. And I, it's only the second time we've ever had to rescind an action item. Remember, I nominated the wrong person for someone before. You remember that?
I do remember that. Any questions on that? I think we discussed that at the public hearing as well. Perfect.
The next piece is Michelle ran the bid process for our maintenance contract, a three year maintenance contract. And the reason why we like to accept it now, even though it doesn't begin until July, we'd like to put these new values in the budget. It's a reduction over current and so we can budget accurately based if we adopt this. The company that comes forward is Denron. Michelle called. References, as always, and went through the process and we have worked with Denron before. So we're looking forward to that relationship and hopefully the board will support the contract so we can put the changes in the FY twenty two budget. Does that work, Michelle? Cool beans?
Sounds great. And last is the monthly financial.
Sure. So in the packet, you have the updated financial. It shows that we've grown about just under a hundred thousand dollars. Some of that has to do with, you know, the hundred and ninety one thousand that we were kind of noticed that we were going to get. We didn't get it until this month in our checking account, but but again, that will all change and it won't show up as a revenue and I'll be taking out expenses possibly before the next one. But anyways, we're growing to where we were last year, just to remember, because there's been so many numbers that are thrown out to us. We were just under, I think, three hundred and ninety three thousand for fund balance. I think it was like three ninety two something. And so what we try to do anyways, what we've tried to do in the past is try to keep pretty consistent around that so that there's not a tax increase based on that we're not able to have the same amount of fund balance at the end of the year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's any.
All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you, Michelle.
I have one. Sorry, it's not a question for you then, Michelle. It's just another plug for folks to get hot lunch because it is currently free. And free is awesome. And then our school gets reimbursed for that. So it's an easy way to feed your child and get the school money. I've been taking advantage.
And the Thanksgiving meal this week that I had was excellent. The turkey stuffing, mash, squash, I think. Good stuff.
That's awesome. All right. Anything else under financial? All right. If not, so this brings us to the our second public comment of the evening. And so if you're. an attendee to this meeting, if you want to provide a public comment, just move your cursor down to the, towards the bottom of your screen, there'd be a raise your hand button and we'll unmute you so you can provide comment. And so I'll give it one more second. If there's anybody who wishes to provide, there we go. So Tammy Clay. Hi Tammy, thanks for sticking with us this evening.
Happy to. My question is, have the Chromebooks been received yet?
Steve, I see you shaking your head no, but I think the answer is no. I know we had Matt Stone with us a couple of weeks ago and, you know, he, he, he has received a few, I'm going to say a few, like a handful, but we're still waiting for the larger shipment.
Yeah, I just got that confirmation from my daughter-in-law. And so the technology thing that you were talking about, the student pay in. Is that for Chromebooks that the older students are receiving, like the high school students are receiving?
So I think the idea would be we, the idea would be, we would be setting up a technology, pretty much like well, it's a capital reserve fund that we would be using to replace Chromebooks over their life. So I have every three years, you know, replacing the Chromebook. So having a pot set aside for that. And then, you know, we could, a town meeting allocate money into that fund. And then we could also use proceeds from students who may be receiving those Chromebooks. It's almost like a deposit, I guess it might be a way to say it. For those Chromebooks to go into that fund that could then help with the replacement of those as we go on. So that's an idea, I think, that the finance committee is thinking about as, as one way to keep replenishing that fund in order to replace those Chromebooks on sort of a, on a, on a given schedule. I think I got that right. I didn't see Rob shaking his head, so.
Rob, is that right? Because I, you know, as a new grandparent, parent of a senior in high school, he has access to a Chromebook. And it doesn't always work. And he may have to bring it back in. And I'm thinking like a freshman entering into high school. If that is something that a parent is going to have to pay in, or you say student pay in, that would be a parent pay in. So that's just my two cents worth.
Tammy, I, you know, it would be, and again, this is all we're just sort of like talking through this at this point and it's not you know, a given. But when the, when the student would get a new Chromebook, then they would make this, you know, and we use the word deposit or, you know, their share of their cost sharing, so to speak. You know, we talked a little bit about, you know, in kids take math classes and pre-calc and whatnot, and the expectation is a scientific calculator that, you know, is a hundred bucks. So it would be, you know, a Chromebook is $200, $300 depending upon what you're getting. So it'd be a fraction of that. And just a means by which that so much of what we're doing in the budget is about revenue and just another way to mitigate costs a little bit. So that's the idea.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tammy. So Amanda Gilman. Hi, Amanda.
Hello, everyone. I first began planning tonight to say nothing but mere thanks. And so I definitely want to lead with that. Thank you to everyone who's put so much time and energy into keeping our kids in person. Enormous thanks and gratitude and love for our teachers for staying strong and sharing their time and energy with us. The, the reward is really immeasurable. And thank you to everyone for listening and following through on the, the grants available and trying to make synchronous learning happen. I, I am forever grateful. And I think an entire generation will benefit in Hopkinton from it. Number two, I go, I have to revisit the Heisa conversation and I go back to the risk benefit ratio with youth sports. And the benefit clearly has been shown by psychologists across the country, worldwide, in fact, that the benefit outweighs the risk. Seth suggested that parent volunteers perhaps couldn't be counted on to maintain the six-foot distancing like paid employees, coaches at the school. I personally, sorry to say, find this offensive. And in fact, as Norm, as a volunteer for youth sports in town, he should probably find this offensive as well because he certainly would maintain that six-foot distancing were he given the privilege of maintaining youth sports in lacrosse, albeit we're talking indoors versus outdoors. Certainly a volunteer who knows that their very existence as an organization, meaning Heisa, depends on following the rules, I would hope would be count, could be counted upon to ensure that safety for their children. Norm's comments about outdoor events when community spread was much lower are certainly out of context here when he applies them to that, that same level of concern today and indoor venue where you're proposing no parents will be present. Certainly a parent volunteer could be trusted to follow caution, the caution mandated by this board as a condition for use. And this board has every right to do. And if that's a condition for use, I would expect that responsible parent volunteers could follow through on this. Outdoor sports this fall had no such mandate. And to compare parents not wearing masks at outdoor sports this fall to non-parent presence at, at a one-hour skills and drills, six-foot maintenance, six-foot maintained practice is totally unfair. So I would urge the board to reconsider this very reasonable request that further supports our children's mental health. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate your comments. I don't have any other hands. And Amanda's just went back up and I don't know, Amanda, if you, I assume you want to speak again because, or else the hand would have come up. So bring Amanda back.
Yes, I didn't think about this one much, but I heard it just a moment ago about the teachers and the healthcare. And I very much support the sharing, the cost sharing of healthcare in line with our peers. So that is my, my full concern is that we as a district follow a salary schedule and a healthcare cost sharing schedule in line with our peers. And by peers, I maintain that peers would be other K through 12 schools. And certainly not the Concord School District, which has, was used in the last teacher's negotiation as our peer. Majority of our peers have cost sharing around the 10%, 10 to even 20% cost sharing. So to go after four to 5% is certainly small potatoes. So I certainly encourage the board to use our peers that are K through 12, not the Concord School District, which has a totally different setup, larger teacher-student ratios, very different scenario. And so to consider this for the future and please, I support this, keeping everything in line with our peers. Thank you all.
Great. Thanks, Amanda. All right. So we have no other hands raised for public comment. So I will close public comment for this evening. Thank you, everyone. And move to action items unless any board member has anything else. I see none. So is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept Harold Martin School Office Manager Christine Ball's resignation effective December 4th, 2020?
We don't want to move it. We don't want to move it. We don't want her to go.
I'll second it and wish her the best.
We don't want Andrea yelling at the computer.
Thank, thank you so much for everything she's done. You know, she was a great coach for my son and just all my kids had her as a, over there. So thank you, Christine.
All right. So Norm?
Norm Poopel is a yes.
Seth?
They frame yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Jim O'Brien is a yes. So the motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept HSD data specialist Karen Pons' notice of retirement slash resignation effective November 30th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good luck to you, Karen.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Norm?
Norm Poopel is a yes.
Seth?
They frame yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Ryan is a yes, so that motion passes as well. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Judy Walsh, Remote Learning Specialist, Hopkinton Middle and High School? Start date and duration to be determined by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Seth?
They frame yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, so that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of the Schedule B slate as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I can't wait to, to see the socially distant musical. I am very excited about that. All right, Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
Seth?
They frame yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the federal funds due to the CARES Esther Grant in the amount of $46,010.07.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. All right, Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
And Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. Motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the federal funds due to the Supplemental Public School Response Fund? And that is for $191,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
Seth?
They frame, yes.
And Jim, yes. The motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the action item authorizing the withdrawal of funds from the Hopkinton School District Building Repair and Maintenance Fund, supporting the installation of the Energy Recovery Ventilation at HMS. And that was item number 14 at our October 15th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Seth?
They frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes, so that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept maintenance contract bid from Denron Plumbing and HVAC as presented through June 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Question. Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Poopel, yes.
Seth?
They frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes, so that motion passes. I would ask for a motion to enter into non-public session for the discussion of matters per RSA 91A, colon, three, Roman two, A for personnel.
So, so moved.
A second.
There we go. Perfect.
Sweet. You're the designated mover.
I know, but we're changing it up.
It's a good thing.
Norm?
Norm Poopel is a yes.
Seth?
They frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so for the board members, I sent an email a little bit ago with a link for the non-public and we can join there when we adjourn here this evening. And I just want to say thank you to Michelle, Steve, Juliette, Mia for, for being with us here this evening and just really wish you guys a happy and restful Thanksgiving with your family. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all too.
Jim, do you need me for non-public or no?
I would love you for non-public, Steve. Yes.
Okay.
All right. I wasn't saying bye to you. I guess I was thanking you, but I'm not saying bye.
Yeah, I thought you were saying goodbye. It's fine. Oh, good.
All right. So we're going to adjourn the meeting and then I'll see the board and non-public in a few moments. Thank you.